There's some, excuse me, there are seats down front. If you guys want to come on down, there are some seats down front here. Okay, would you please find a seat? We can't get started until everyone is seated. We can't have anybody standing. Thank you. There's some chairs over here and some down here. There you go. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 150 Board of Education meeting for April 25th, 2016 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Adler.
Here.
Mr. Boyd.
Here.
Mrs. Pastner, here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please join me?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for approval of the minutes from April 11th, 2016? So moved. Did you call a roll?
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Boyd.
Aye.
Mrs. Pastner.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye. Okay, tonight we have a community recognition. Our Community Contribution Award recognizes Comcast. This week, the Peoria Public Schools is teaming up with Comcast and the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Peoria to put some sparkle and shine on the neighborhoods surrounding Peoria High School, the pride of the city. During Comcast Care's Day, Tuesday, April 26th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., and Saturday, April 30th, from 8:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., volunteers will be cleaning, trimming trees, repairing fences, and performing other beautification projects on the areas surrounding Peoria High School, Peoria High School North and Peoria High School Athletic Complex. We need volunteers. Sign up at www.comcastinthecommunity.com and type in 61604 in the address search box. When the Peoria Public School project appears, click Volunteer on either the 26th or the 30th, April 30th. Lunch and beverages will be provided for volunteers both days. And I'm sure you didn't get all that, so you can call our secretary for that or go online and you will see a reference to that. On Saturday, April 30th, event will include activities for young children. Volunteers should dress prepared for outdoor work. In case of rain, volunteers will work indoors on projects in the school. In addition to this special event, Comcast has also partnered with us by Parent University and the Internet Essential Programs. At this time, Art.
Or Tom.
Come to the podium and share more with us.
Sure. Well, Internet Essential is just an awesome program that Comcast offers to families in different communities. It's a discounted Internet service and you go to our website and you can see if you qualify. I'm sure they have information inside the offices, but it is just a great program. It's a discounted rate for families in need that need Internet service. And again, you can go to their website. Comcast Care's Day is an awesome program. We do it every year. I've been doing it for 15 years. I started out in Colorado. I grew up in this area, but started my career out in Colorado. And for the last 15 years, we've done a program in the community wherever we're at, several of them. And this year, we're partnering with District 150 to do some maintenance repairs. Last year, we were at Springdale Cemetery. It's a lot of fun. We certainly encourage anybody to come out and help out, kids, I think it's 13 and over, maybe 12 and over this year. But you can come out, enjoy, you know, some fun and activities. Parents, we'll put you to work. We've got some painting and some cleanup. It's a really good time. We usually start wrapping up about 12, 1 o'clock, so it doesn't take up your whole Saturday. But we do have a lot of fun and there'll be a lot of us out there. I'll be out there working and we certainly encourage everybody to come on out and help us out this year.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Dr. Karat is going to come and give you some appreciation.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Just a small token of appreciation for helping us out with the beautification. I have another project for you guys, too.
Sure.
You could use some flowers.
Sounds good. That's what I'm getting. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Awards and recognition. Youth Authors winners. Who's doing the youth authors' winners?
Young Authors.
Oh, here we come.
Marcie Steele and Susan Gobine.
Okay. Marcie and Susan, welcome.
Good evening. I'm going to, we'll see how many kids are here, but we're going to recognize all our Young Authors winners for our district this year. So, the Illinois Young Authors Competition is a celebration of the written work of children in kindergarten through eighth grade. Peoria Public Schools participates in this every single year. This year, we had 1,947 manuscripts. Each school was able to, of all the manuscripts written at their school, each school was able to submit their top three manuscripts in the following grade bands, so K through two, or second grade, third and fourth grade, fifth and sixth grade, and then the last being a seventh and eighth grade. There were 120 manuscripts that were submitted for us to judge, and there are two overall winners at each one of those grade level bands, three honorable mentions, and then for the younger grade levels, we also had the best illustrated, because we found the young friends really put some effort into making sure their illustrations relayed meaning as well. It seemed like once they got up to like sixth grade, that kind of tapered off and it was more on the writing itself, so. So there are 120 manuscripts, like I said, and the eight overall district winners are going to represent Peoria Public Schools on May 14th at Illinois State University. It's a Saturday for a full day where they get to meet real authors and present their books and so forth, okay? So, right now, I am going to go through all our winners from all three categories and they're going to get their original manuscript back so that they have that for the Young Authors Competition, and a trophy, so that, you know, I know a lot of kids have athletic trophies and so forth, but being an adult now, I think if I had an academic one on my shelf at home as an adult, I think I would have more pride in that one. They might not at this age, but when you're older, trust me, the one that you're getting now is a very big deal, okay? So, for our kindergarten through second grade bands, one of our overall winners with the book What I Know About Planets is Chase Hamlet from Glen Oak. Is she here? Here, buddy? I got to tell you, this book is very, very, very impressive. He is very knowledgeable. Yeah, you are, huh? And our other overall winner for kindergarten through second grades with the book Animals on Land is Felicity Boots from Charter Oak. Our honorable mention from kindergarten through second grade with the weather book, Christopher Fololove from Tree Winn, if he's here? Okay, thank you. It's really interesting to see how some of our youngest students really understand the plotline and everything at such a young age. It was pretty impressive. And another honorable mention from kindergarten through second grade with Captain Genius and the Attack of Doctor Electronic, Olivia Schall from Heinz. And our third honorable mention for the kindergarten through second grade level is The Mighty Dragon, Breon Porter from Woodrow Wilson. Good job, buddy. Very good job. Then we have our Best Illustrated from the kindergarten second grade band with the title Pam and Sam See a Rainbow, Lucy Wyckoff from Thomas Jefferson. Is she here? She said Dance?
Yes.
There's a lot of young ladies at Dance tonight. The other Best Illustrated for kindergarten and second grade band, The Girl Scouts Sell Cookies, Elena Pratt from Charter Oak. I do, I do know that there's a young lady that's on her way from Charter Oak, so if she comes in, we'll recognize her when she gets here. Okay, from the third and fourth grade band, one of our overall winners, I got to tell you, this book, when they came in and we were reading it, yeah, I see, when we were reading it upstairs, we were all literally laughing out loud, grown adults. It's fantastic. Ten Ways to Use Donuts in Everyday Life is the title of the book. And Bryson Pokarny from Whittier. Truly, it's fantastic. I loved it. One of our other overall winners from the third, fourth grade range band is The Snowfall by Sophia Dotty from Heinz. One of our honorable mentions from the third, fourth grade band is The Lost Princess by Joanna Rettingen from Glen Oak. Also from the third, fourth grade band, Stuffed Animals Can Talk, Kiara Jackson from Charter Oak. And finally, our other third through fourth grade honorable mention, All About Gymnastics by Samuel Swain from Keller. You should see the pictures with this one. You can tell he's a talented young man in many ways. Our Best Illustrated from third, fourth grade band, The Wonders of the Rainforest. I got to tell you, this, the detail in these illustrations, you would learn just from looking at the pictures. This is from Haruni Boparachi from Charter Oak. And our last of the Best Illustrated from the third, fourth grade band, My Zoo Trip by Carly Brown from Thomas Jefferson. Okay, now for our fifth through sixth grade band, overall winner with the book A Thief on the Loose is Gabby Hernandez from Rolling Acres. And our other winner from the fifth through sixth grade band is This is What Happens Without Dodgeball, and this was fun. It was a fun book. Rachel Laird from Washington. Our first honorable mention from the fifth through sixth grade band is The Sixth Grade Detective by Abby Mayer from Washington. I don't think she could be here tonight, because I believe she's at Dance as well. Our other, our second honorable mention from fifth through sixth grade is Benita Isabel Martinez, A Biography by Isabel Martinez, also from Washington. And our final honorable mention from the fifth through sixth grade band is Mystery at Redwood Middle School by, it's co-authored by Shaylee Coon and Tori Erickson from Mark Bills. Like that collaborative effort there, girls. Our overall winner, one of our overall winners from, okay, before I even talk about the seventh through eighth grade books, I'm not one who reads for enjoyment. I read to learn, so I'm one of those dorks who just reads like informational texts all the time. The seventh through eighth grade books were so impressive, it was ridiculous. I mean, there were probably a handful that if you're the parent of some of these kids, you should send them off to a publisher right away, because some of these books were ridiculously good, better than some of the series that I have actually read for enjoyment. I forced other people to read some of them, because they're, it's amazing. It really, really was. It was very difficult for us to choose the seventh and eighth grade winners, and of the five you're going to hear about, there's probably 10 to 15 other ones that were equally as fantastic. There was just some, a hint of really fine-tuned literary elements or something that were put into these winners that just put them over the top, like professional authors. It was, it was impressive. So, our first winner from the seventh through eighth grade category is A Better Day by Cameron Proctor from Washington. Come on up, Dave. Our other overall winner from the seventh through eighth grade category is Breaking the Boundaries by Emily Lee at Mark Bills. Our first honorable mention is Bluebird by Miranda Pop from Washington. Our other honorable mention is titled Pop by Leila Ruz from Calvin Coolidge. And finally, our other honorable mention from the seventh and eighth grade is High Society, Ground Zero by Kiara Williams and Danya Brown from Rolling Acres. And then, Ms. Silkowski, did you bring a young lady that was, did she, was she, she make it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, so those are our 24 students that we're honoring with trophies tonight, but like I said, there was 1,947 manuscripts that it was probably pretty hard for our schools to narrow them down to the 120, because I know it was really difficult for us to narrow down to the handful, but there's some pretty impressive writing going on with some of these kids in this district, so thank you.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'll say congratulations to all of the winners and all of those that submitted, and with the parents and teachers, please stand up. Okay, and board members, have any comments? Mr. Chloe?
I would just say that it's terrific to see students involved in writing and creativity, and keep it up. Don't stop here. This is, this is just a great start for you. You can, you can have a wonderful opportunity in terms of your education and your career just by writing. There's a lot of people that do that, and it was really interesting to see some collaborations. They're future screenwriters, probably, so congratulations to you and to the parents as well. This is great that you're encouraging that, and I thank you for that as well.
Any other board members have anything? Okay, K through H chess winners.
Good evening. I'm Karen Garmin, the Peoria High Chess Coach and a member of the Peoria Federation of Teachers Union. First off, I would like to thank Madam President, Dr. Karat, and the board members for allowing me to present the K8 chess tournament winners here tonight. The union and I have sponsored a K8 chess tournament at Peoria High School the last two years. My goal is for every student that participates in this tournament to have fun using critical thinking, thinking strategically, and wanting to continue playing chess. I spoke to each participant, making sure we achieved this goal, and we did. This was also an opportunity for my chess team to participate, being stewards and working in the concession stand, and so it was a very good collaborative working together. There were 11 schools that participated, would love to have more next year. Without further ado, will the chess winners please stand and come up here when I say your name? First grader Mitchell Wigner from Charter Oak. Bring your trophies. Second grader Walter Hayes from Keller. Third grader Quentin Di Soto from Charter Oak. Fourth grader Dylan Calligan from Keller. Fifth grader Kimion Davis from Glen Oak. Sixth grader Matthew Mullen from Glen Oak. Seventh grade Donald Egan from Washington. And eighth grader Max O'Donnell, Donald, from Lindberg. I just want to congratulate each one of these again. It was a wonderful day. Good job, everybody.
Congratulations to all the young men that we, that came up. Are the parents in the audience? Please stand. Thank you, and I saw some principals and teachers as well. Thank you all.
Mrs. Ross.
Ms. Wolfmeyer?
I just wanted to say, events like this are really great, and I've been to, I didn't go this year, but I've seen this before, but what I think is wonderful is, a lot of times when people think of extracurriculars, they automatically go to thinking of sports, and there are so many other things out there for kids to do. Sports are not for all kids, and it's wonderful to see these kinds of things and activities that the kids can get into and still be successful and compete and learn everything that they learned through that competition. So I think this is great.
I also want to thank Mr. Knapp, because I know that you were instrumental in starting this tournament, and that was, that was a good thing, some years ago.
I was about to say the same thing. I saw him in the audience, and when I was a principal at Whittier, it started with Mr. Knapp, and I had a team, and sorry, Ms. Garmin, I missed it. I had a conflict, and I, I won't miss it next time, and hopefully we'll have all the schools participate. I'd like to see some girls also. Winners. This is awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. State Scholars.
Good evening, Mrs. Ross, Dr. Karat, and Board of Education members. I'm here representing our high schools tonight to recognize the 65 members of the Peoria Public Schools Class of 2016 who have been named Illinois State Scholars by the Illinois Student Assistance Commission, otherwise known as ISAC. The State Scholar Program recognizes high school seniors based on a combination of ACT or SAT scores and a percentile class rank. In any academic year, only approximately 10% of Illinois high school graduates are named state scholars. This year, two Manuel Academy seniors, two Peoria High seniors, and 61 Richwoods High School seniors were honored. We have them highlighted in the front lobby with their pictures and their schools, and encourage you to stop by and see these remarkable young people and congratulate them as they all prepare to graduate in the next, in the few, next coming weeks. Also, oh, and there are their pictures out there on the floor. That's so nice. Also tonight, Richwoods High School Principal Cindy Clark is here with announcements to share about the National Merit Program, Class of 2016 and Class of 2017.
Good evening, and I can't see when I put these on forward, so if you want to, like, now I can see you, so good evening. And good evening, everyone, and, and girls can play chess, too, and I know that they will win in the future, because our best effort is our, is our better effort. As the principal of Richwoods High School, I'm proud to announce that six students representing Richwoods will be considered as 2017 National Merit Scholars. The six students are part of the 50,000 highest-scoring participants out of initial pool of 1.5 million program entrants. From the 50,000 high scores nationwide, about 16,000 will be named National Merit semifinalists, representing the top scores in each state, and approximately 34,000 others will be commended for their performance on the PSAT. Semifinalists and commended students in the 2017 National Merit Program will learn of their standing in September, when Richwoods and other schools across the country are informed by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Semifinalists will be the only students who will have an opportunity to continue in the competition for about 7,400 National Merit scholarships to be offered in 2017. Congratulations to Joshua Boyle, 11th grade, Gustav Genetin, 11th grade, and IB program, Elizabeth Lindquist, 11th grade, Juliana Reese, 11th grade, Landon Sale, 11th grade, and Lori Workman, 11th grade. Eleven Richwoods students were considered as 2016 National Merit Scholars. Three of those students, Emily Ballou, Winston Lindquist, and Zachary Settlemire, all current Richwoods High School seniors, were named part of a group of 15,000 semifinalists in September of 2015, and later named finalists in February of 2016. All three students are currently being considered for National Merit Scholarship offers. Merit Scholar designees will be announced by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation starting later this month. So, we also have Senior Honors Night tomorrow night, where a lot of these, not the national merit, but our seniors will be honored for all their outstanding academic achievements, memorial awards, and those things, starting at 6:30 p.m. So, everyone is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kudos to Mrs. Clark and her team at Richwoods. I attended the Indian/Asian Celebration, and the presentation was amazing. The kids performed very, very well. The costumes were incredible. The performances were something to, to experience, so your students and teachers, the individuals who advised them, did a nice job. Thanks for the invitation, and I would visit again. It was, it was a great experience, so thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Step Dance Team Competition Team.
Ms. Johnson, please, present.
Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mrs. Ross, Dr. Karat, and Board members. Step and Dance Teams from 11 Peoria Public Schools gathered at Manuel Academy on Tuesday, March the 22nd, for the Fourth Annual Peoria Public Schools Step and Dance Team Competition. The show was postponed from its original date of Saturday, March the 19th, so that the Manuel students and staff could participate in Manuel's state basketball tournament appearance, so we appreciate the organizers and the team's flexibility. so we appreciate the organizers and the team's flexibility. Several hundred parents and friends attended the show, which also included performances by college step teams. At this time, I'll call Tamara Butler forward to recognize our winners, that are also, some of them are here tonight.
Our winners this year for middle school dance was Mark Bills, coached by Megan McGann, if you could stand. First place primary step team, Glen Oak, coached by Ms. Diane Hines, who is unable to attend this evening. First place middle step, Roosevelt Magnet School, coached by Arian Wallace, second time winning in a row, I think. And then first place high school.
Our first place high school was Richwoods High School, coached by Tamara Butler.
I would just like to thank Revanda Johnson for her support of this event over the past four years, and also Principal Heather Young for being cooperative with us while we took over her building on the school night. Every team spent hours on their routine, and it was evident from their performances, so I would like to thank the principals, teachers, parents, and especially the students. Job well done again, so, thank you.
Any Board Member comments? With that, I think we'll pause just for a few minutes. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the Board meeting, but those of you who have children who have school tomorrow, if you'd like to leave. That's everybody.
I think we are. Do you want to, or do you just want to go home and go to bed?
Thank you. Announcements? Board Member have announcements? Mr. Adler?
Students in Peoria Public Schools High Ability Learners Program will display their research and interest projects on Friday, April 29th, at our Third Annual High Ability Learners Program End-of-Year Exhibition at Woodruff Career and Technical Center. The final projects will be on display for other schools, parents, and public to view. The exhibition will be a celebration of the hard work, creativity, and talent of our students, with many things to see, interactive displays, and experiments to observe. This has been an exceptional year, and the exhibition will undoubtedly reflect that. Parents and members of the community may view the projects between 10:30 and 11:30 AM in the WCTC Gymnasium, and students will introduce themselves to visitors, tell their, talk to their display, and talk about their projects. Encourage you to go.
Thank you.
The 2016 Kindergarten Transition Fair, held on Saturday at Woodruff Career and Technical Center, was an outstanding success. Over 750 people attended, an increase of 220 over 2015. Remarkable. 152 students enrolled for kindergarten onsite Saturday, an increase of 59 over last year. Hines, Keller, Thomas Jefferson, and Glen Oak had the most students enrolled onsite. Many families have information packages and plan to enroll their students at their home school kindergarten open house. Kindergarten open houses begin this week and continue through August. Dates and times of kindergarten open houses are posted on the www.psd150.org calendar and the individual school website calendars. Using WCTC for the kindergarten fair provided ample space for entertainment, booths for schools and community organization, making parking and meals, more parking and meals. Entertainment for children included the chance to have a photo taken with Pete the Cat, a petting zoo, an art station, face painting, balloons, and dancing. The WCTC cosmetology students painted nails and gave free haircuts. Lunch was provided by the WCTC culinary arts students.
Thank you.
I attended, it was amazing. I mean, and, parents were happy, kids were happy, and very, very well attended. It was actually very impressive. Kudos to Ms. Jenkins and the principal, Ms. Powers, and the team, and there are so many teachers, and everybody just sort of pulled together and put on a successful event.
Wonderful.
I would echo the same, Dr. Karat. I've heard from a number of parents who are, I mean, have been to other events that we've had in the past, and were just kind of floored at how much there was available to them. Kudos.
Any other comments? Yeah? Okay.
Another announcement?
I have an announcement.
Okay.
Go.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cloy. With the Kindergarten Transition Fair, pardon me?
No.
Oh, with the Kindergarten Transition Fair this past weekend, it's a good reminder for all parents to begin the transition for next school year. Next fall, Peoria Public Schools transitions to First Day Compliance for all physical and immunization requirements. It's not too early to make your appointment now and get health requirements out of the way. Also, if you have a high school athlete, our athletic trainer, Athletico, Unity Point, Methodist, and Peoria Public Schools are teaming up to offer free, 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 free participation physicals for all athletes for the 2016-2017 school year. Every athlete must have a IHSA Medical History Physical Form on file before the sports begin. Free athletic physicals will be offered at Manuel Academy on Wednesday, May 4th, from 2:30 until 4:00 PM for athletes going into the 10th through the 12th grades only. Peoria High School on Wednesday, May 11th, from 2:30 to 4:00 PM for all grades. And Richwoods High School on Wednesday, May 18th, from 2:30 until 4:00 for all grades. There is no cost, but prior to physicals, parents must complete and sign a medical history section of the IHSA physical forms. Students can get these forms from their coaches. Incoming freshmen and parents, you are required to get two physicals. The above aforementioned is only a sports physical. You must also get the mandatory school physical documenting shots and et cetera from your primary doctor. Thank you.
Mr. Cloy?
Thank you. The Peoria Public Schools Foundation will recognize 24 Peoria Public Schools 7th grade girls who excel in mathematics. That would be this Wednesday, April 27th, at 6:30 PM at the Glen Oak Learning Center. Students will receive the Deidre Purcell Collins Math Award at the annual Finding Your Path with Math event. Students who receive this award display high aptitude for math by earning top scores at their respective schools on standardized tests and by displaying exemplary classroom performance. At this event, award recipients will hear from 2016 Illinois Teacher of the Year, Kim Thomas, as well as District Mathematics and Science Coordinator, Susan Gobine, who will speak and lead students through a variety of math activities. I was there last year, and it was very well done, and I would commend it to you again. The award and the event also give the girls an opportunity to apply for a scholarship to attend the Illinois Central College College for Kids Summer Program, and since it was started in 2007, more than 237th grade girls have received the Deidre Purcell Collins Math Award. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Karat?
Thank you. The Chamber of Commerce has invited me to give my first State of the Schools address. This event will take place at the Civic Center on Wednesday, May 4th, at 7:30. Breakfast is included, and tickets can be purchased on the Peoria Area Chamber of Commerce's website. Thank you.
Okay.
I've got one.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. The Gerald and Brookheart Arts and Education Spring Celebration began last Friday at the Peoria County Courthouse Plaza and continues through May 24th. Students from Lincoln K-8 will perform tomorrow, Richwoods High School on Thursday, April 28th, and Woodruff Wilson Primary School on Friday, April 29th. The complete schedule for performances is on the www.psd150.org calendar and will be posted on Facebook and on Twitter.
Thank you. Tonight, during Executive Session, Board of Education reviewed six resumes received for the open District 2 seat vacated by Reverend Linda Butler on April 1st, 2016. The deadline for all resumes to be submitted was Friday, April 22nd, 4 o'clock PM. The Board chose to set up interviews for all six of the candidates during the first two weeks of May. The candidates include Marcus Fogliano, Kay Cynthia Si, Parrish McConnell, Douglas Shaw, Jessica Thomas, and Gregory Wilson. That's just, we had a consensus on setting that up for next week. Thank you. Okay. District Presentations. Do we have 2015, 2016 Discipline Update?
Presented by Ms. Shannon Marman.
Good evening. I wanted to give you guys an update on discipline for the 2015-16 school year. Just so you know, I will be giving an end-of-the-year update, so if there's anything that you don't see or that you want to see more of, I can do that at the end of the year. Okay, we have had some strategies implemented this year, looking ahead at Senate Bill 100, to promote positive and supportive learning environments. One, I would, huge thing that's gone on is the weekly progress monitoring sheets, and this is done, the AIOs, with the principals, and once they meet with the principals, then the principals take it back and meet with their staff, and they go over and develop plans for targeted focused areas for students and teachers, so not just the students. We have also had SIP Day activities this year. We've had several that, the effective strategies, pretty much to engage students, because when students are engaged, they are definitely not going to act out as often. We also talked about rigor in the classroom, how to minimize and maximize engagement. We've put on de-escalation training for general ed, special ed, and teachers assistance and attendance, and then the social and emotional learning training for all substitutes, teachers, and staff. We also had the SEL activities at Parent University, where we actually went over some of the Y-try activities, so that parents could take this back, and that we could be using the same language that's, we're using in the schools. Implemented this year throughout many of our schools, we started with BIST, we have been working on Second Step, Y-try, CPI training as needed, and then we started a little bit the restorative practices at Woodruff. So this is what you see once you get all this lining up. Okay, so this is just until April 1st, and I have done this for every school year since 2013-14, so it's as of April 1st. As you can see, for the 2015-16 school year, we have actually, the days that students spend out of school due to suspension, we have lowered currently by 3,000, around 3,000. With the next category, the number of students suspended, we have lowered the number by around 300 from last year. And then, the number of suspensions throughout the district, we have actually lowered by What this is, is this shows you all the students in the district who have been suspended, and if they have one suspension, and then all the way through 10-plus. So as you can see, for 2015-16, that's your gray line, the dark gray, and it goes down every area. As a, so like 10-plus suspensions, last year we had 22 students who had 10 or more suspensions. This year, we're down to eight. And as you can just look at the numbers, you know, nine, 16 to nine, so we are really doing some things, lowering the suspensions and the referrals in the school. Number of suspensions by grade level. You'll see here that some of, some grade levels, we have gone up, but then we have dropped drastically in others, and I just, pretty much those grade levels, we're going to have to start working on some of the in-school, some of the in-school discipline strategies. For like 2nd grade, as you can see, they've gone up by almost 60, but 3rd grade lowered, 4th grade lowered, 5th grade lowered. Kindergarten is a little bit higher than I'd like to see, but it is lower than last year. And what you can really see, this is where I've noticed a huge difference, the high schools. We have really dropped with the suspensions, and not only the suspensions, but the number of days students are being suspended. The average amount of days for a suspension this year was only two days. For this school year, expulsion with abeyance, we've dropped from 115 to 73, expulsions, 88 to 63. We have only had 20 revocations of abeyance, and we've had 23 revocations of board probation, which those are your students who can no longer attend Woodruff, and, you know, they're just out of school until they can go back and be successful at Woodruff. These are our number...
Those, if you could go back one.
Go back, please.
Those are for the same time period?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's like for like, it's not one year, full year versus...
No.
Pardon? Thanks.
From April 1st.
Yeah, to April 1st. Okay, these are our students who have been served at, we have a Family Core Respite, that's the, it's at the Methodist Church right here on Forest Hill, and as you can see, this is the number of students being served, November being the biggest month that our students attended at Family Core, and here are the number of suspension days. Once again, 53 days in November that we use Family Core as a respite, so our students would be off the street and be receiving instruction, and also, in the afternoon, they do the social-emotional learning component. And this is what we are working on, sorry about if you can't see it very well, but it's, this is going to be our continuum of services. Suspended students right there on the left, and then are expelled, and this is kind of taking Senate Bill 100 into, in how we're going to take that and work with it next year to try to give our students more of a continuum, instead of just, you know, from their home school to Woodruff, to out on the street if they can't make it. So this is still, work in progress.
Any questions or comments?
Shannon?
A couple, just a couple of comments. It always concerns me, and I know at the beginning of the year, a lot of the administrators, one of, part of their goals was in reducing suspensions and expulsions from the building. And I certainly hope that the drop is because of things we're putting in place and things we're doing with the children, and not just that we aren't suspending kids that need to be suspended. That's always a fear I have, is that one way to lower your suspensions is just not to do it. So I hope you guys are keeping an eye on that.
We are.
And I also, I always fear that principals feel like the board doesn't want them to suspend, and it reflects on them badly if they do, and I don't feel that way as a board member. I, there are some kids who need suspensions, and so I certainly hope that is not the case. And I had another thought, now it went right out of my head. It's one of those old age things. I don't remember what it was. I'll think of it.
It's overextended. That's what I say. Questions to Ms. Marland?
Just, you mentioned Senate Bill 100, and I know that we're working on the policies and the issues that are coming out of that that require us to do certain things. Compared, just, this is sort of a, compared to what is required of, or what you've seen of Senate Bill 100, compared to what we currently do, how much of that do you think is going to have to change? Is it a large amount or a modest amount? How would you characterize that? Obviously, you can't put a number to it, but...
Well, we've started working on it this year. I think we will definitely have to change the way some suspensions are given, because with Senate Bill 100, we have to justify the reasons, like for the amount of days, and it just can't be a clear-cut five days or six days. So I think that is definitely going to have to change. Also, there will, an excuse will no longer be given that we have no in-school suspension in our school. We cannot do that next year. We have to find options within the school and document that before we can ever put them out of school.
Okay. I had a thought, too. Maybe you've got one. I was listening to you, and it just...
I thought of mine.
Oh, good. Well, I'll get mine.
It has to do with SB 100, is, I certainly hope there's going to be a lot of education for our administrators and our principals, because as we sit on the Discipline Committee, there are a lot of suspensions and expulsions that are proposed that are not going to fly with SB 100. And I mean, an accumulation of demerits, or an accumulation of tardies, or some of the infractions that principals, some principals are suspending or even expelling for.
Correct.
So I hope they are going to understand, their world is going to change drastically, too.
It definitely will, and we're going to be working on things that we can do. We're going to have to start early. I mean, we have started, but we have to, because they have to change their mindset.
Right.
I thought of mine. Just takes time. Without knowing the exact detail of the policies, are we going to have to make any significant changes in the systems that support the documentation internally, based on what you're seeing coming out of this? I mean, is there, is there a lot of IT work, or is there a lot of reprogramming, or changes in Skyward, or other things that we need to be thinking about right now that need to be made in time for the start of school next year?
We definitely will have to come up with a form, because the documentation has to be there, and that will definitely have to be looked at and gone over before we ever can proceed with an expulsion or a long-term suspension. I think it's anything over three days has to be justified.
And the documentation package that we've seen so far, in some cases, is very significant. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of, in some cases, it's five and six pages of documentation for certain circumstances. So it's administratively pretty burdensome, and it needs to be...
Right.
We need to find a way to do that without having to create mountains of paperwork, if we can. And I'm not sure how we get that done, but that cannot be a paper, if it's a paper system entirely, it will fail.
It will.
It will just not work.
Definitely.
Ms. Marland, I appreciate you putting this together for us, and I think the Board appreciates also that, I mean, this discipline is a foundational characteristic, if, similar to attendance, if we don't have that classroom expectation, that we struggle at a lot of other things. I have two questions for you. One is, did you see any categorical trends as you looked at the last couple of years to this year in terms of the types of infractions that our students were? Anything related to weapons, or violent activity, or drugs, things that might have popped out to you?
I can say aggression against staff has gone up, and I think it's because it's being used in the younger grades now, K-1, 2. There, I saw a significant increase in aggression against staff. I think one positive trend, our amount of days of a suspension is now the average two days, where last year it was only, it was three days, but still, we are lowering that average suspension rate.
Okay.
And I, yeah, I think it was mainly the aggression against staff in the younger grades.
Okay. And then, another question that Mr. Claude and I have had, I think relatively continually, is, do you have a perception of the effectiveness of abeyance? If we essentially put a student on abeyance as a warning that they are on the edge of being expelled, whether for drugs or for another type of infraction, how likely is the child to come out of that and re-enter a state of normalcy within the student community versus being expelled or losing their abeyance?
I think sometimes kids need that behavior contract, but, and they definitely, I think we would have seen 120 kids out of school if we couldn't have offered the abeyance for, because some of it ended at, you know, after first semester. I definitely think that we're going to have to, next year, be thinking kind of outside the box. Why not put a behavior contract in place? You know, why even get to the expulsion with abeyance? Those are the things we're going to have to look at, and we will be able to lower the expulsions, especially with abeyance.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, yes, we can get a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay. My own personal opinion is, over the years, we've tried a little bit of everything, and I know you probably remember the AP, which is the Alternative, you know, Alternative to Suspension Program. But I think the key is paying attention to what's happening, even if you have them on a contract. And in the past, it hasn't been enough time, enough follow-up or follow-through on really paying attention. I mean, the kid is on abeyance, but nobody really knows that. It just, you know, there's no, there's no requirement for them, so to speak, to check in, or their parents to check in. So, I mean, it was always a parent, a student, and administrative duty, so I think the key is in the follow-up. And especially now that we have the Social and Emotional Division, that'll probably get better.
And with abeyance this year, with the contracts, almost everyone has a check-and-connect with a counselor, or, you know, a staff member, principal, and those, we are getting the documentation before we ever proceed to, if we're going to revoke it.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you. An update on summer school programs. Who's going to do that?
Susan.
Susan.
Gershman.
Susan Gershman.
Good evening, President Ross, Board members, and Dr. Karat. We are happy to, despite our budget constraints, offer some what we think will be powerful summer school activities focused on academics this summer. We have an English Language Learner Program, Zslavna, and that'll be for students in K-8. We have something called Camp Invention, which the Board approved about a month or so ago. It's an inventor's type of program that has a STEM focus, and that's for students going into Grade 4. We have our Special Education Program, which is a continuation of the IEP into the summer. We have Transition Camps for students going into 5th grade and into 9th grade that are demonstrated through their data behind academically. So we're going to have a deep focus on reading and math for those students. And what we're doing with the programs for students that are behind level, we're trying alternative methods, too. So sometimes if you teach it in a slightly different way, then students pick it up differently, and then those that go, those methods that work, we'll pick those up and use them during the school year, too. We have an Avid Summer Camp for students going into 8th and 9th grade, and that'll be open for the whole district, not just Avid schools. And those students will learn Avid strategies and methodology that they can use when they go into high school, and they'll get to go to, we've got some campus visits set up to ICC, and hopefully ISU and Bradley, so students will get to sit in a college classroom to kind of get that vision in their head, "I can sit in a college classroom and learn." That's in August. We have LEGO Next STEM Camp, that's a robotics camp, that'll be two different weeks, and there'll be 50 students per week for that, Grade 6 through 8. And that's with our engineers, and in the community will be working with students on that. We have a K-2 reading program focused on students to close those early reading gaps. And all of these are invited camps that I just went through, except for the LEGO Next, that's an open enrollment, and students can pick up applications, actually, every student was given an application for that program. We also have a summer camp, WCTC-style, and that's all about careers, and that's for students going into Grade 5. They'll learn about audubody, cosmetology, hair braiding, culinary, barbering, health occupations, and construction. That one does have a $20 participation fee. And then we have Compass Learning, that will be at various sites around the community. And schools will have flyers on Compass Learning as well. We have Credit Recovery that we're offering at the high school level, and those are students who are identified through counselors that need to participate in Credit Recovery. And then we're also, and by the way, that represents around 700 summer learning opportunities that we're offering. We are also going to have a Parent and Child Reading Program called My Child is a Reader, where parents and their child can come to our workshop, and we'll have teachers work with the parents while the children play, and our teachers will teach the parents how to, learn how to read at home with their student effectively, and then the students will come in and read with their parent while our teachers can kind of give more pointers. And that, we're still working on the dates on that, but we're hoping to take that one on into the school year to offer, maybe at Parent University, or some other activities throughout the year. So we have lots going on for students.
Great. Any comments? I would just like to say that, you know, the reading piece would be excellent to work with the library on.
Yes.
Because I know the library wants to partner with us, and it could be a year-round...
I actually left that part off. The library is working with us on summer reading programs, and we have the Bookmobile coming to these sites as well with the students throughout. The other thing I wanted to say is, last year, we had leisure time, kind of recreational camps for kids. Because of our funding, we couldn't continue with those, but the Peoria Park District's partnering with us, and they're picking up those camps, so students would still have the opportunity to participate in those.
And will serve meals?
Yes. Breakfast and lunch will be served before and after all of our camps.
I have a question in regards to those students that are behind, okay, you said that the possibility of changing the teaching method, I guess, is this, is this, would this be something like for children that are being retained, or...
Not necessarily, but they just might not be quite on level, and we want to just kind of close that gap.
Okay. The dates and everything for all of the various summer school activities, it's going to be on the website?
Yes, and actually, most of them are in June, but some are just week-long programs, some are for the whole month, and some happen in August, but we'll have all this on the website. And then also, students receive letters of invitation to attend the majority of these programs.
Okay. Other questions?
Another question, I'm sorry. I think, I may be incorrect on this, but I think last year, on the summer program at WCTC for the 5th graders, wasn't there a, didn't they have to have certain grades in order to participate?
No, I mean, what they did last year is they offered for kids who had stray days on their report card.
Oh, it was free.
They let them go.
Free, okay.
But this year, due to the cost of our supplies and things, we're just charging that minimum point, but they're getting an $8 head, so...
$8 head?
I had an education, what else could you...
Is it just for kids?
Well, sliding fee for adults.
$8.
Any other comments or questions from Board? Thank you, Ms. Gershman. We're now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the Board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of quality education for the students of Peoria District 150 Schools. The Board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights to free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the Board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to talk, to talk about or discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, Board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, psd150.org. We realize that three minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box. I don't know how many, we don't get very many comments, but we love your comments. If you, if you don't want to get up and speak, please put your comments in the box for your convenience. Our Board Secretary will be collecting those comments after each Board meeting and compiling and sharing those with the Board and Superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has three minutes, and no one under age 18 may address the Board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without consent of the majority of the Board. Our first speaker this evening is Mr. Terry Knapp. Welcome.
Thank you. I have a couple of reflections, one as to the chess tournament. Back 20 years ago, we, the Teachers Union, had monthly meetings, the third Thursday of every month, we would meet in an agency, and we met with the Peoria Chess Federation, and Chase Engersaw, who was an attorney in town at that time, was big into chess, and they came and presented. And out of that community meeting came the impetus for the chess tournament. The teachers were sold on the fact and bought 400 chess sets and put them with boards and tend to a building in the district. And at that time, the state was starting their IHSA state tournament for high school chess, which is held, by the way, at Civic Center, if you didn't know that. Mr. Rhodes, Mike Rhodes, and Mr. Brian Devine at Woodruff took on the chore of starting chess in earnest in Peoria, and Woodruff was the first high school team to participate in the chess tournament. It was truly a great experience. Several students actually placed in the state chess tournament when we weren't even involved in the state chess tournament. That was a reaction by the Board of Education to partner with the teachers and come up with this. It was a great thing. You know, we need to do more of that, we need to work together. Also, I'd like to talk about summer school for a minute. I know we have limited funds, but we have to get this school district to the point that we have a nine-month school year and a two-month summer school for enrichment, as well as for bringing kids back up to par during the summer. Some kids need to be in school year-round, and I don't mean the Valeska Hinton model, I mean 11-month model. It's very important that we consider this, find the resources, partner with people in the community to get the resources. We've had students, and it's not by Credit Recovery, Credit Recovery doesn't do anything. It doesn't recover any credit. These students do not, if they fail the class, they do not get credit for that class unless they take the class over in summer school, and that was done. Many of our students took classes over, didn't have a successful freshman or sophomore... Many of our students took classes over, didn't have a successful freshman or sophomore year, retook classes, and were on their way to higher college educations. I could name some of those individuals, truly success stories. We don't do that anymore, we stopped doing it 10 years ago. It's just sad that we don't consider that. It's sad that we don't have year-round schools, truly year-round schools for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sharon Cruz.
Finding and retaining teachers are problems facing most public schools. How many teachers have left our district after one to five years? This administration has begun to change the perception and the reality of the more negative teaching environment that it inherited. Concerns of teachers across the country seem to be the same as past experiences here, such as policy decisions are made by central administrators who often assume they know more than teachers do about what works in the classroom. In my opinion, the most negative example of ignoring teacher input was Lathan's demand that teachers use the Reading Mastery Program. I believe a Whittier teacher who had effectively taught so many children to read was so frustrated with this directive that she risked teaching reading the way she always had and went unnoticed until her retirement, good for her and her students. We all witnessed what happened when Charter objected to the program. Such programs are described as internet, on-internet comments, as scripted lessons that a robot could perform. Also, some administrators jump on every new approach or computer program. Also, there are the constant administrator walkthroughs with their iPads clicking off checkboxes, I guess. The testing craze is another issue that negatively impacts teachers and teaching and essentially blames teachers for results. Teaching has caused teachers to lose control of content and pacing and has added mountains of paperwork from, from teachers required to prove that they have addressed the objectives, et cetera. A major issue is the problem of student discipline and lack of support from administrators. I do believe this administration has started to address the problem, for example, the efforts to improve Lincoln and to address mental health problems. This is a never-ending task about which complacency is not acceptable. Certainly, salary is a teacher concern. Teacher pay has become a political football with threats to end teacher benefits, freeze salaries, cut pensions, and unions. Frequent increases in class sizes adds work and often increases discipline problems, yet no one considers large class, larger class sizes as a reason for pay increases. Salary does not reflect the fact that many teachers work evenings, on weekends, and during vacations and summers. I often wish that administrators cared enough to ask how many hours a day we worked at home. Especially, high school teachers are expected to sponsor and/or show up for extracurricular activities. Also, teachers spend considerable money on supplies for their work and for their reason. I am going to say this one thing here. I worry about the future of education in this nation. There have always been problems of one sort or another, but the pressure on teachers is increasing. I wonder when the breaking point will come, when too many will walk away to keep the system afloat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Anton Patterson. Welcome, Mr. Patterson.
Hi, my name is Antoine Patterson. I'm here on behalf of the children of this district that have no voice, the autism program. Since I've been sitting here in this audience, I've looked around and I tried to see some familiar faces, and none of y'all are familiar to me. Why none of y'all familiar to me? Because none of y'all come to the autistic program. But all of y'all decided that it should go down to another school builder and move out of Glen Oak. The seventh and eighth graders, although they are a part of this district, so is the special needs program. And by definition, special needs means special needs. If these kids are, are actually a part of this district, then they should not be moving. Their, their consistency is a big part of their development, and to move them into another building as if they won't notice is laughable to me. I don't see how moving the seventh and eighth graders into the Glen Oak building and moving the autism program out of the building is going to take down teen pregnancy, is going to stop these kids from being defiant, and going to make these kids strive for academic excellence. As a parent of a child with autism, I've been fighting to better the program for the autistic kids at Glen Oak, and over the past six months, it's actually been working. There are more signs put in the building, it feels more welcoming to the autistic program. And here recently, I get notice that they're leaving after I've just done all of this to make it better for them where they're currently at. I feel like it's laughable and, and a blatant disrespect to the amount of tax funding that goes into building schools for y'all to up and say, well, we're just going to move them, when y'all have already put all of this funding into parks and programs and different type of playgrounds that are right outside of the room that will not be down at the other school. The other school does not have central air, and I feel like all of these considerations have not been taken, have not been taken into consideration considerably. And as a parent of an autistic child, I'm very furious, and I wanted all of you guys to see my face, because I will not let this slide, and I will be gaining the support of the rest of the autistic parents and staff members within the building who all have blatantly stated that they don't want the program to move. I feel like, I feel just like how she said, the voice of the teachers are not being heard. If the voice of the people who actually deal with these kids eight hours a day, five days a week, hasn't been taken into consideration, then how do I know that my child is receiving the most adequate education that is available to him in District 150? All kids matter, not just, not just the ones y'all want to pick out at certain times. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you. Kyle Forsen, Forsberg?
Forsberg.
Forsberg.
Good evening, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the Board. My name is Kyle Forsberg, and I'm here today representing the Forsberg Agency with hopes to receive your blessing in making a four-month-long contribution to Calvin Coolidge Middle School. We are a team of young entrepreneurs that seek to create and maintain successful relationships that impact lives in a positive way, and we have felt a strong alignment to core values, to the core values demonstrated in the mission and vision statements provided by Calvin Coolidge Middle School. From April 27th to August 17th, we have put together a rough outline on how to share our agency's resources with Calvin Coolidge Middle School in hopes to further promote their specific mission and vision for the faculty and students that call it home. Though specific allocations of our resources will be at the discretion of the administration and our agency, the majority of the contributions will be in the form of volunteer work, both in-school and extracurricular, food and beverage catering for special events, both also in-school and extracurricular, as well as specific donations to the school such as copies of the book We Beat the Street by Drs. Davis, Dr. Jenkins, and Dr. Hunt, as well as basic school supplies. Service to our community has always been paramount in both our personal and professional lives. We have made significant contributions to area schools at the collegiate, high school, and middle school level. However, this is the first time we will be offering an extended focus of our resources to a single location in particular, and it is because of this scale and scope that we ask your approval in bringing this idea to fruition. With the cooperation of the Board and Calvin Coolidge Middle School, we hope that this idea of sustained collaboration between the Forsberg Agency and District 150 will continue to grow. I thank you for your time and consideration for this amazing opportunity.
Thank you. Any response from Board members or administration on audience?
Sorry, I didn't know if that was.
Any response from Board members or?
We'll work with them, Mrs. Susan Gershman.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you could get some clarity on that and what would be involved.
Ms. Gershman, it will work with Mr. Forsberg. Thank you. Information items. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Is that Mr., where is he?
Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Oh, Carla, Carla's here also. Mike and Carla.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. McKenzie or Ms. Eamon on the expenditures over $2,500?
Just a comment, and I've mentioned, mentioned to Dr. Crowe before, I, I know that there were.
Mr. McKenzie, can you come up to the mic or something? Thanks.
Ah, you're stuck at the podium.
Yeah, we've looked at it, so we can, I can answer some too.
Oh, okay.
I know we're in a bit of a ramp up in terms of replacement of technology, but I will say that I am a little concerned about the level of spending on technology itself. I know the Board hasn't driven direction specifically on that, but we're in the area of, you know, hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars to HP and Apple on a yearly basis. And meanwhile, we're in the position of, even if in small numbers, reducing classroom teachers and, and direct contact staff. So I'd just make a comment that that concerns me, and I'd like the Board to consider that as we move forward in next year's budget direction.
Those are, those are Title I dollars, right? So those are sort of short-term, go ahead, Ms. Eamon.
I think, yes, we have to always consider staff, which is 80% of our budget, of course, but at the same time, we need to be able to utilize the licenses and software, and as the computers age, we're trying to carefully go through, we took a complete inventory and tried to focus on the most, you know, the schools most in need, and going through lab by lab or classroom by classroom to figure out exactly what's needed. We don't consider this something that's going to be an every-year activity now, but we went ahead and took some carryover money and wanted to focus so we could use what we had, you know, purchased as far as licenses and, and needs for the students. I think that's what that was about.
How much of that was the technology grant itself that could only be spent on technology?
This is not technology grant funded, it would be from Title I, and what we were trying to do is look at the streams, we were trying to use the streams a lot, which are the less expensive laptops. We're taking old outdated ones that have been breaking and then trying to replace with much less expensive pieces of equipment that hopefully now more students will be able to utilize. We can get more for the same amount of money, but just again, that concern about wanting to use the programs that we have available and not have it fall by the side because of not having adequate equipment. So I think, again, it's a balance and that we do need to monitor that and only do what absolutely is needed to continue.
And, yeah, based on what staff mentioned to me, those computers, some, some of them are eight years old, nine, 10, and that's, you know, that's very, very old. A lot of other districts are moving to one-on-one. So as it relates to technology, that's an important platform that, that needs to be infused into the, the way we do business.
I just wonder if it might be helpful at some point, because I know we have, like the technology grant, a lot of different sources for, for those kinds of things, even the, the E rate rebates that's able to be, so it might help, be helpful for the Board if, if you could let us know how many of those things are coming through that you can use to pay for the technology. I, I mean, I know we get it in pieces as it's on the, the report, but if you could maybe let us know that kind of thing, it would help us understand that it's not coming out of the Ed Fund. Sometimes that's the only thing those funds can be used for, so that would be important for us to also know, so that, so that we can make that connection between do we need the technology or do we need the staff. I think that's important.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, the E rates eventually is being phased out. I think we're being reimbursed 70%, and then next year, I think it goes down to 50, and then the following year, 30 or 20.
That's only in the cellphone area.
Especially, yes.
The cellphone area of E rates falling off, right now, E rates paying for, later in the agenda, there's an E rate doing for infrastructure, that, you know, you can use E rate funds for, or you can apply for E rate funds to do infrastructure work as far as switches and Wi-Fi and things like that, and that's what's later in our agenda where the, the category two E rate will reimburse up to 85%, but you can only do that certain years and stuff. And then some of the other E rates phasing out, like they're, they're going only to internet access that they are reimbursing us for, so that any dial-up things, so cellphones that have dial-up, you know, is, the E rate is phasing out over the next few years, so. And Michelle Seiple and Carla and the Title I Director, I mean, they, they spend a lot of time trying to work and figure out the best ways to use those funds, and it, it always seems like an enormous amount, but, so I understand that, but when you really break it down to school by school, you know, with 27 locations, right now we're struggling, Michelle's struggling with teacher.
Computers.
Computers, because teacher computers, you can't use Title I funds with, you have to use just regular education funds. So those are something that has to, is an ongoing struggle, too, so. And a lot of these computers are not taken out as the system until they're seven, eight, nine years old. My personal computer that sits on my desk, I only replaced because it literally broke and would not start anymore, so, I mean, we just do, we just try to string these things as long as possible when it's not directly student contact, so. Even in student contact, we string them along as much as humanly possible.
One of the ways to offset that is to replace printed textbooks with electronic access, and I would think that five years from now, we wouldn't have a single printed textbook in our high schools.
That's not cheaper, though.
Yeah.
Well, there's got to be a disruptor in the, in the industry sooner or later that's going to figure out, like the music industry and the video industry and everything else, is going to tear that business model apart, and the exorbitant rates of costs for these textbooks are going to come crashing down, because somebody's going to figure out a way to, Kaplan's already done it with the free stuff online, and it's got to be a better way than the incredibly expensive textbooks that we're buying.
The other thing you have to remember, though, and, and especially in, with the poverty level in our district, if you're going to go to all online textbooks, then all kids have to have computers at home.
And that's one of the things that you look at, and the other thing is that, that type of access through Comcast allows that to be done. That, that technology is advancing very quickly, and it just seems to me that we ought to be, we ought to be using that as a negotiating tool with our textbook suppliers. If you haven't got a credible alternative to what's being offered, you cannot get your price. And until we start negotiating a way that gives the textbook publisher pause to think, you know, they may be serious about not buying our books anymore because we're too darn expensive, they won't do anything. I guarantee you, no one will offer you a lower price unless you have a credible lower-cost alternative. So we need to start negotiating very hard with those folks, and maybe the state of Illinois or the Illinois Association of School Boards or some other organization with some real buying power, start working with those publishers and say, hey, we've had enough of this.
That's what we need, because right now, it's not cost-effective going electronically. I, I tried it last year and it didn't work.
Well, and let's get.
It's actually more expensive.
Let's get a consortium of Illinois high schools and, and school districts together and figure out how to do that. Any, any other questions? I had.
Maybe a recommendation with Mr. Adler's comment would be a presentation by Ms. Seiple, because they've done a lot of work and we have those inventories, so I think it's a great question, and we can do that if the Board wants us to proceed with that. Okay. Can you share that with Ms. Seiple, please?
Yeah, she's out today, but she'll, I will share with her tomorrow, so.
So that's her, that's a reward for not being.
For missing us at Board meeting day, exactly.
Well, maybe we can, maybe we can get our questions, get, because I have questions on Skyward all the time.
On Skyward?
Skyward, it's like the money that we're paying out for Skyward this month, I'm not sure.
It's $115,000 or something for the annual license, yeah.
License.
Renewal of the Skyward license, yes.
It's a renewal. It's a renewal.
I think I asked this question.
I mean, it's gone up, you know, it's, you know, it's, it goes up three or 4% every year and it's a renewal and the other.
Okay.
We haven't, I mean, to do, we can talk about other alternatives, but.
Any other comments or questions to?
Well, my question would be with Skyward, is there anyone out there that, another vendor that offers that same product possibly at a lower rate?
Well, there's other vendors, but if you're going to move to another vendor, it's, it should be a six-month or a year, a year-long study and then a, you know, a year-long conversion. So it's not something that we could do in a short term.
No, I'm not, it's not something I'm asking to be done. I'm just asking if, you know, if the possibility exists, you know.
Oh, there's other vendors, certainly.
If we look forward to moving, if we look for, towards moving to another vendor for cost, you know, for cost-effectiveness, it doesn't hurt just to see what's out there and what that cost would be. That's all I'm asking.
It would be a huge overhaul, but the majority of districts in Illinois are using Skyward. There are some, go ahead, Ms. Wolfmeyer.
Well, and you always need to look to see if there's a better way or a better vendor out there. We went through this, when we went from what we had before and switched to Skyward. Then you start all over again.
Right.
We're paying for all their licenses. They have to come in and set up all of their stuff.
But we had full capacity with Skyward. There was some time, you know, we were supposed to be adding.
Well, we were, but I think they're using more and more of what's available on Skyward, from what I understand. And I think they're, you know, they've got everybody on board now, but I mean, it's, we've been down that road. You leave one vendor, you go to the next one, and then 10 years after that.
Yeah, in 2005, we spent over a million dollars, you know, even buying it in the first place. So it's not like it would be inexpensive to move forward with, you know, forgetting staff time. It's a very expensive option to move. I mean, we could look into it, but if we're going to look into it, we need to probably form a committee and.
All staff trained on it now, because, I mean, just last year, not everybody was trained on it.
Well, you always have turnover, and so you have the student side, you have the finance side. So, I mean, we try to train people, but yeah, you're always going to have some people that feel like they're not trained enough in Skyward, so. But if you switch, you'd have that same issue with whatever system.
At this point, you're just paying for the renewal of the license as compared to starting all over.
Jerry uses it quite a bit, Hammer and Shannon does too, so feel free to share some feedback based on this conversation.
For the last four years for HR, we've put all our forms online and used modules that we had used for the first six years of that.
Right, I knew that was something.
So we've been utilizing it a lot more in HR since I've been over there. We did look into a new payroll system, though, because for two years, we interviewed nine vendors, and it's about $400,000 just to get a new payroll system because what we have can't go paperless. They can't, Skyward can't accommodate what we have on our payroll side for how much capacity it is. So it's a cost to it, and we were going to use our badges as, to swipe in for the boxes and everything to go paperless, but it's still an initial cost to get it set up, just for that one module for payroll.
Yeah, they have a monopoly. I mean, they are expensive. Those trainings are just ridiculously high. I complain about them, but to a certain extent.
They're about $1,000 a day, yeah.
Not very many options, though, regarding that platform.
Any other comments or questions on over $2,500?
We will look into it at some point. I think it's a good, great discussion and.
Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such requests. Thank you.
Does it mean Ms. Ross?
Yes, that's you.
So since our last board meeting on April 11th.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to beg the board's indulgence for a minute. We have a chess winner who got here late, and I was just wondering if the board could just take a minute to acknowledge. Kamarian Miller, who was the fifth grade winner from Glen Oak.
Yeah.
Stand up.
Thank you for your indulgence.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And yeah. Since our last board meeting on April 11th, we've received three new Freedom of Information requests. Of these requests, one was filled. There was one pending, pending request noted on April 11th, at April 11th's board report. This request was also filled. We have received 17 requests for this calendar year for a cost of $6,949.39. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cloy, consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. The meeting's consent agenda consists of the following items. Number one, gifts to the school district at this meeting, $14,955, year-to-date, $92,793.69. Proposed action that the following donations be accepted and letters of appreciation sent to the donors. Band orchestra instruments valued at $3,705 by the Civic Center from the Barry Manilow Music Concert to Peoria Public Schools, and band orchestra instruments valued at $11,250 by Kidder Music of two Peoria Public Schools, and our thanks to them. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, the Human Resources Report. The proposed action is the appointment, employment compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee. Item number four, payment for travel. Item number five, approval of selected vendors for E-rate 2016-2017 contracts. The proposed action that the Board of Education approve the selection of the following vendors for contracts based on a recent request for proposal period following USAC E-rate guidelines. The vendors have been chosen based on a scoring system with price as the highest weighted factor. Contracts must be completed, signed, and submitted to USAC by 5/26/16. Contracts will be executed with the vendors after vendor choice approval by the board on 4/25/16. Prices below the vendor show the total price and the estimated district cost after E-rate reimbursement of 85% is listed in parentheses. LAN switches, double LAN controller, Wi-Fi network upgrade. The vendor is Midwest Communications Cisco. $51,245 one-piece price for 15 new Cisco switches, including installation costs. Estimated $7,686.75 one-time cost to the district after E-rate reimbursement. $198,551 one-time price for 23 25-pack or 50-pack Cisco wireless controller licenses. Estimated $29,782 one-time cost to the district after the E-rate reimbursement. Number six, canvas of election return. Proposed action that the canvas of votes for two members of the Board of Education, one from District Two and one from District Three, as presented by the Election Commission for the election held on March 15, 2016, be accepted. In District Two, a full five-year term, Robert M. Davison Aviles, 6,629 votes and is elected. From District Three, for a full five-year term, Daniel Walther, 6,949 votes, Terry Spayer, 3,757 votes, and Mr. Walther is elected. Item number seven, and I believe that does conclude the consent agenda. Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any items a board member would like to remove for separate vote or different questions? May I have a second, a first motion?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Yep.
Mr. Adler.
Any, any discussion, questions? Call the row, please.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Cloy.
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carry.
Deliberation agenda. Ms. Jackson.
Number seven, suspension review. Proposed action that the suspension review listed on the report dated April 25, 2016, be approved as presented. Second.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Cloy.
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carry.
Number eight, expulsions. Proposed action that the expulsion listed on the report dated April 25, 2016, be approved as amended. Second.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Cloy.
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carry.
Number nine, expulsion with the expulsion to be held in abeyance. Proposed action, the expulsion with the, expulsion with the expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report dated April 25, 2016, be approved as presented. Second.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Cloy.
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carry.
Number 10, revocation of expulsion held in abeyance. Proposed action that the revocation of expulsion be held in abeyance listed on report April 25, 2016, be approved as presented. Second.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Cloy.
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carry.
Number 11, revocation of board probation. Proposed action that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated April 25, 2016, be approved as presented. Second.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Cloy.
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer. Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carry.
Thank you. Presentation and suggestions by board members. This is something you want to talk about? Okay, that, all right, presentations by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Ross. This will be quick. You should, do we, do you need an extra copy?
No.
Okay. This is in reference to shared governance and just wanted to see if the board members had any feedback regarding the idea of identifying the student board member. I've given you some information and just wanted some feedback from you. And it would be, we would invite current juniors to apply to become a board member for the upcoming school year. One junior from each high school would be chosen to serve on the Peoria Public School Board during their senior year. The three students, because we have three high schools, would rotate in coverage, thus providing the experience to be balanced throughout and also give the board and public a deeper insight into a variety of perspectives. Students would, so yeah, let's, just wanted some feedback, please. And then there's also a possibility of, let's start with that piece first. Yes, Ms. Wolfmeyer?
I think it's a wonderful idea. I think we've been thinking this for a long time that getting, it's a good way to get input from our students. Really, students don't have a voice, unless they have the courage to come to the podium. Some do, most don't. And I know when Mr. Cloy first came on the board, he and I went out and talked to high school students at each of the high schools, and it was a very, very eye-opening experience because they have some very definite thoughts on the way, some of the things that should be done. They also have some wonderful reasons for why they want things to be done in different ways. And I know back, I think even before I came on the board, there was a huge push through the students to be able to wear shorts year-round. There used to be a six-week before and six weeks after. And they did a concerted campaign and presented their case in such a way that the board at that time, I wasn't on the board, decided to let them do that. So I think it's a great idea, a great way to get the young people more involved in the district. They learn what's going on. They learn what it's like to have to sit up here and make decisions and can take that back to the other students. So I think it's a great idea.
And some years ago, I think it was Peoria High's Government Relations Group.
Oh, it used to come?
Yeah, it used to come all the time. And I suggested at that time that we, you know, have a student as a board member, so. And then we, I used to visit all the schools, just like you did, and talk to a select group of students once a month and bring that information back. Ms. Jackson.
Madam President, I think it's a great idea. That was Mr. Lawless who brought his classes to the board. There are districts all over the state and other communities that have a student represented with some limitations and that kind of thing. I think this is a move in the right direction. I think we'll be, we won't be surprised with the things that our students are concerned with and want to be involved in. So I think it's a wonderful move. We should do it and go from there.
Speaking of limitations, they would not be able to vote.
Right.
And they would not, they won't participate in the executive sessions, for example.
Okay. Ms. Kostick.
Yes, I also agree that it's an excellent opportunity. I think that many times as adults, we tend to think as adults and not understand the real realm of what students really want or what their expectation, what their needs are. And so I think it's an excellent idea, that I think that they can bring a lot to the table in opening our eyes, because again, like I said, many times that we make decisions based on our adult thought process. I mean, even if we're talking about what kids should wear to school. Well, we have one way of thinking why they should wear something, and again, like Ms. Wolfmeyer indicated, you know, their rationale is totally different. And it's probably those things that will make us go, hmm. So I think it's an excellent idea and I welcome it. I look forward to working with, you know, some students. I think that they'll bring some fresh, some fresh ideas to us and make us think about some things that we haven't thought about in a long time. So I think it's an excellent idea and an excellent opportunity for them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
I agree. I really support the shared governance model. Went to a university where as a student, government leader, was invited to the Board of Control to speak on behalf of students. Think that's a great opportunity. Also had the chance to sit with some Washington gifted students a couple of weeks ago. And first question out of the gate, they start to pepper me about who picks the lunch menu? And, you know, I, first, off the top of my head, I was like, well, you know, it's not a big deal or whatever. Adults pick the menu, but the students are the ones that actually eat it. And, I mean, I'm sure there's hundreds of more examples of ways we'll be exposed to things better by having a student voice up here, so I support it.
My thought is that they ought to run for the office.
Get the experience.
Yeah.
Well, you know, that may involve into that, you know? We've had that happen before.
Not at a public election, within the schools, their own peers.
No, it depends, the school-aged kid, okay.
We could get to that, that's.
At some point, yeah.
At some point, yeah.
Break it to them gently.
Report from board committees. Are there any report from board committees?
The Buildings Committee should meet Friday, 9:00 AM. Mrs. Kostick.
9:00 AM?
Could I ask for the Building Committee to check into something, or maybe the superintendent? I've heard that with the beautiful new fields that we have at Peoria High, and I know we went through a big thing with them putting the sprinkler system in, I've been told that there's no way to hook water to that sprinkler system. So if somebody would, I don't know if it's true or not, but if somebody could look into that, because I've been told that.
Is David?
It works, I mean, the sprinklers just work.
Is there water coming out of it?
Where's Dave?
There was in the fall, and I.
That's just what, that's just what I've heard. Okay. 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 And they said, I mean, I was told that the grass is starting, that the grass is dying and that kind of thing, because the sprinkler system's there, but it's not working. So I decided to throw that out there.
Point of order, we don't have an agenda headed for unguarded rumors.
Thank you. And that's our legal speaking. I will, I'll check into that field. I'd be happy to do that. Dave was here earlier, Myers.
Dave Myers, what do you read the news?
Any other committee report?
Policy Committee is meeting Wednesday at 10:30, and then we're going to have another meeting with the Parent Teacher Advisor Committee on, what's the date on that?
May 4.
May 4. So those both are set, and we're trying to get as far down the road as we can on the Senate Bill 100, student discipline and other policies, so that those can be handed off to the various administrative functions.
The Advisory Committee also is having an additional meeting, because we want to come up with some suggestions on how we begin to involve parents in schools and with their children. So we wanted to kind of stretch out our lead so that we can come up with some suggestions so that the next committee can start looking at those suggestions and how to move forward to getting more parents.
Any other committee? No? Pardon? We, you mentioned that already. Okay, motion?
Madam President, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Let me get this to Pam.